Hi, everybody. Thank you very much for coming this evening. It's nice to see so many people here, so many Claremontians. Tonight, we are going to have... The candidate forum is going to work like this. Mr. Filner will have the opportunity to speak for about 10 minutes, telling us what he plans to do as mayor, what his thoughts are about the office. And then, we have some questions for him that came from people in the community. We have the opportunity on the website for people to submit questions. So, we have some from the community for Mr. Filner to answer as well. To introduce Congressman Filner, he received a PhD in the history of science from Cornell University in 1969. That could not have been easy. Shortly after, he moved to San Diego, and it has been his home for over four decades. He brought his activist experience to a 20-year-long teaching career at San Diego State, challenging his students to put thoughts into action to shape the world around them. Bob Filner was elected to the San Diego School Board in 1979, which included service as president of the school board in 1982. He was then elected to the San Diego City Council, served as deputy mayor in 1991. Mr. Filner was elected to serve in the U.S. House of Representatives in 1992, which included service as chairman of the House Veterans Affairs Committee. I want to thank Mr. Filner for coming this evening, and encourage all of us to keep it positive this evening, and I hope that you'll talk about yourself and your ideas. We have a microphone for you right now, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the invitation. I was listening to the Treasury report. You are the richest town council in the city, maybe in the world. I'm not sure.
You're not going to take our money?
I'm sorry that the feds are here. We're taking your money. Right? I think so. Let me just make a few statements first before I... I never walk into a room when we have our police officers about thanking them for what they do. Thank you very much. And, of course, the police officers, and the firefighters, and the lifeguards, and the deputies here also support my candidacy. So, thank you, guys. Those are, by the way, union bosses, or that's what somebody calls them. Thank you for your service. I want to talk a little bit of how we can help you more in a few minutes. I also do want to say, I heard when Ryan, you were talking to the representative, you said, "Well, Mayor Sanders does not have a representative." Sounds... I think that's normal. That will not happen when I'm mayor. There will be a representative here. I will be here. On some occasions, you know, when I was on the city council, I visited every... I was at every planning group in the city, at least once. And, all the town councils, etc., I come out of that background, so I greatly respect what you do and the expertise that comes out of here. And, you make my job... It always made my job easier and harder. Easier because I knew exactly what I had to do, because I just had to listen to the community concerns. Harder because you also want accountability. You're not going to let up until we do it. So, I thank you. I do want to point out, although Mr. DeMaio's not here... John, raise your hand. He sets his tracker. They have a camera. They want every little mistake I'm going to make, they're going to put on a 30-second ad. So, he's respectful enough to come visit you, but he sends his tracker to make sure if I make a mistake, they catch me. So, welcome, John. Nice to have you here. By the way, this guy, I think he's attended every single thing I've ever been at. And, I'm thinking he's going to become a Democrat before the end of COVID-19, because he has to listen to people all this time. Again, thank you, you know, for your participation in the community. As I said, I come out of this kind of background. I first ran for office only because my... I was the president of my kids' PTA elementary school in the déjà vu, I guess. The school board tried to close my kid's school, and I went down to the school board to say, "Why are you doing this?" And, they... I think the school board meeting still stays at the same time. Tuesday at 1:00, where nobody can go. They didn't count on a professor or teachers on Monday, Wednesdays, or Fridays, so I went to school board meeting. And, I just asked a question, and they said, "You know, why are you here? We made the decision three years ago." I said, "I just found out about it. Just let me know why you're thinking this way." And, they said, "Well, you shouldn't be here. We know what's best for your kids." I got very angry that they treated me that way, and I went back to the next meeting to see if they treated everybody that way. Sure enough, they did. And, eventually, election came, and I wanted to find somebody to run. I never thought about entering public office, but I couldn't find anybody to run, so I ran, and somehow got 50.0001% of the vote. And, I served on the school board, elected president. We made some major changes in the school system, putting resources in the classroom rather than the bureaucracy. And, out of that, I ran twice. I was elected twice to San Diego City Council, and now 10 times to Congress, as a part, including service as the Veterans Committee Chairman. Any veterans in the audience? Wow, thank you, guys, so much, I mean, for your service. John, with... I learned a lot from you, sitting in offices with you. But, I mean, I'm not a veteran. I decided to go on that committee because we have the largest population of active-duty veterans in the country. And, I said, "I better learn those issues." And, I learned them so well that when the Democrats got the majority in the Congress, I was elected as chair. In fact, I was the youngest chair in terms of service of anybody, of chairman during that time. I was there 14 years. Some of my colleagues were there 32 years before they got to be chairman. But, we literally changed the whole face of the veterans' budget in the four years I was there. We raised, for example, at a time when we were cutting everything, the veterans' budget went from $30 billion to $50 billion for health care in a... per year. That's a lot of money. Now, the VA has to be responsive, it has to be open and available, but the resources are there, especially for health care, mental health care. I wrote the bill that I announced with President Clinton... I'm sorry. I have Clinton on my mind, since he just endorsed me. But, I say I was... I had President Obama on my side, but I guess I was at his side. We announced my plan to end veterans homelessness within five years. Zero tolerance for veterans homelessness. That program is funded, and it's... I have no reason to believe it won't work. And, veterans are half of the homeless population in America, just about. So, when I get to be mayor, I only have half the problem to deal with. And, I know you're concerned with that, and I want to tell you what I would like to do about that. But, I also, really in honor of my own dad, who came back from Europe in 1945. The GI Bill had passed in 1944. He was able, for the first time in his life, to go to college on the GI Bill. He also, more important, maybe, we never lived in a house. I lived in relatives' apartments. If we could buy a house for $1,000 down, I think it was. First house. I'm in a good neighborhood, I go to a good school, I go to college, I've become a congressman. I think it's all because of the GI Bill. My dad was a steelworker. I'd probably be a steelworker. No, we don't have any steelworkers. I'd probably be out of job. But, the opportunity for education and for housing for those who served us, those benefits have gone down over the years. So, I wrote a GI Bill for the 21st century, for young people from Iraq and Afghanistan. They have the full benefit of college and low-interest loans for housing. We also brought in the National Guard and the reserve units, the full eligibility. And, there's 800,000 veterans today in Congress because of the bill I wrote. I feel pretty proud that we were able to do that. So, I bring those accomplishments, I think, back to being Mayor Sanders. I'm probably the best-prepared mayor that has ever run in that. I've served on our school board, I've served on the city council, I've been at the national level. We've brought in hundreds of millions of dollars' worth of help for infrastructure here, for education, for health care, for neighborhood improvements, and for, by the way, cops. I worked with President Clinton to pass a program called COPS. I mean, that was the acronym. To have federal funding for local community policing. And, we hired hundreds of police officers in the '90s out of that program, and we've gone tremendously down. These guys do not get the support that they need, and it's an untold story. I don't think we've really been honest by the city leaders in terms of the dangerously low levels we have reached. We used to talk about community policing, remember? Proactive policing. These guys do cross-your-fingers policing. That is, they cross their fingers that when they're at one place, some other worse incident doesn't occur. Because we are... We have had a net loss of officers over the last decade. Every year, there's less and less, and we haven't kept up because of... We haven't hired, we haven't given them the salary and the benefits that they ought to have to stay here. So, we've got to change that. I mean, that has to change. I've never... I mean, when I talk to those officers, and I see, you know, I... When I was up in the northern part of the city, in a council district whose name I won't mention, there's... The northern part of District 5 has 25 square miles, which is half of the area of San Francisco. It's a big area. One cop there right now. He's called the Mira Mesa Zero Cops. I didn't look at the Claremont figures, but I suspect you're way under the level. There's only half, even half of our fire stations that meet the minimal staffing levels that are established by, you know, by agencies who, you know, have to get saved. You've got to be five minutes at a place, or someone dies, right? I mean, minutes count. So, if you're there in seven minutes or eight minutes, doesn't sound like much, but you're going to lose a life, or a fire will spread. That is not acceptable for San Diego. It's not acceptable for Claremont. You do not have the kind of police and fire that you ought to have, and I'm going to change that. It's going to be high in my list for change in this city. So, I come out on these things, as I said, with background, leadership. You know, I was elected president of the board. I say that because I was the only Democrat on the board, but they elected me president. Why? Did you vote for me, John? I think even John can't vote for me. I was president of the board, and we really achieved a unanimous board to do things. When I was on the city council, I was one of three Democrats. They elected me deputy mayor because they called me the go-to guy on the council. I got things done. They knew I was fair. They knew I could run the meetings. They knew I could bring people together. And, you don't get to be a chairman of a major committee in Congress unless you work... You're elected by your colleagues, so you have to have... They elected the guy who knew the most about veterans affairs in this whole country, really. And, you have to work with the other side. All those things I mentioned, we got through virtually unanimous Congress. That's very unusual. You might know in today's Congress to get that stuff done. So, I've been a leader wherever I've been. We have accomplishments, and we have a vision.
Thank you.
Oh, my 10 minutes, sir.
That was your 10 minutes.
Thank you. I'm sorry I didn't realize that.
Thank you.
But, I'm a former professor. I talked for 50 minutes, so please settle down.
Not tonight. Not tonight. Thanks. Well, I'm going to start... These are questions, again, that were submitted by people in Claremont through our website, and so I'll start with a little softball question for you, and we're going to make our answers fairly brief. So, the softball question is this. Mayor Sanders has supported and promoted the craft beer industry in San Diego, citing the huge economic impact it has on the city and developing San Diego as the Napa Valley of beer. What do you plan to do as mayor to either continue in that direction or step away from it?
Who asked that question?
Anonymous from the web.
Oh, okay. I'll drink to that. By the way, the reason I ask, I just happened to be at one of the craft beer sites that get to meet with those who are owning and get the sense of what they're doing and their problems. Man, I tasted hops, I tasted barley, I tasted the beer. In fact, I'm telling you tonight... By the way, let me ask you a question. My staff said, "Don't be photographed on television with a glass of beer." And, I said, "No, this is what we're doing here." So, I'm on TV today. Get back before the Chargers lose. I mean, before they win. What do you think? Does that make me a more humbling person when I'm drinking some beer? No. You want to see? Okay. Anyway, here's the three things I learned. Number one, you realize, you know, we become... We have 60 breweries now, about 30 applications, and this is almost 10 years after we started this rush, and there is still no policy on craft breweries. There's no zoning laws. I mean, they have to look at every single one. This is silly, that we are praising this, and the mayor is the chief cheerleader for that, but we don't have the permitting process there that allows these guys to... They still don't know where they're allowed to go. So, I'm setting up... We agreed to set up a task force with the brewers, with the city, to get that finally down. The police department has to be involved with it. They get to comment, because there's a liquor license involved. And, tell your guys, my friends, they still think breweries are a bar. And, so, they say, "No, we don't want more bars in this area. We've got to sit down with the police, with the mayor, and we're going to solve that issue." And, lastly, the biggest issue that these guys have is a capital investment that you have to make without the knowledge that they're going to get a license. That is, they have to raise $1 million to $2 million, and they don't know whether they're going to license. We've got to change that, so there's a sense, if they fill the fold, these conditions, the ABC, the Alcohol and Beverage Control Board, which is a state agency, will give them things so they can get the investment that they need. So, I've drank a little this morning, but I learned their issues. We've got to do more for them.
Well, it's obvious you're serving the public by drinking that craft beer. Thank you for that. And, also, oh ye...
If elected.
Oh ye, of little faith, the Chargers did win tonight, 31 to 6. Thank you.
By the way, next week is Beer Week in San Diego, and I... If elected, we'll have it for two weeks.
I guess we're done here, then.
Promise me.
All right. On a more serious note, this also is a question submitted from a member of our community. "The roads around our city are in very poor condition. When may we expect the main roads and those in individual communities to be resurfaced?"
Well, let me just put that in a broader perspective, if I may. That is, the neighborhoods of San Diego, whether it's Claremont, whether it's Tarrasana, whether it's Sherman Heights, wherever, have been neglected for years. You have not had, whether it's the road resurfacing, or the maintenance, or the parking, or the library openings, or the rec center, whatever, have not... We've not paid attention to our neighborhoods. My sign says neighborhoods, not special interests. We have been putting in $200 million a year into downtown in the last decade or so. $200 million, that's our tax money. Neighborhood... I was the representative for downtown when I was on the council, and we needed CCDC, the Center for City Development Corporation. We needed investment. I wrote the gas lamp plan. You've been there? There used to be nothing but porno shops and tattoo parlors. We changed that with focused planning and innovative private entrepreneurship. But, people can build big high-rises now and make money. They don't need a public subsidy, I don't think. The neighborhood of downtown needs parks, like Claremont does, and... But, we have to shift as much money from that CCDC as it'll let us into neighborhood infrastructure. We just had a vote at the city council that said that raised our tourist tax 2%, the TOT, the transient property tax. Guess who got to vote on that increase in tax? The guys who own the hotels, the Marriotts, the Hiltons. Not us. That's a public... That should be a public vote, even though most of us won't pay the tourist tax. But, even worse, $35 million a year that 2% will bring in. Guess who gets that $35 million? Does not go into the general fund. Treasurer? You know what the general fund is? It goes right into the hotels to supposedly promote San Diego, but that's their private fund. No accountability, nothing. They get to spend it on their advertising. I want to take half of that for police officer staffing. I want to take it for neighborhood staffing. I mean, neighborhood improvement, infrastructure. Our money is going to private interests. That's what's been wrong with this city for... In the last five decades. One group has been doing everything, and so the neighborhoods have suffered. I'm going to change it. We're going to have more inclusive city. We're going to have more open city. The newspaper publishers go crazy because of my candidacy. By the way, you know, I had a press conference at downtown. Mr. Manchester, who owns the paper, he's also the biggest developer town. He has the rights to develop what's called the Navy Broadway complex, to build the Navy a new administration building, but he gets development rights in a sort of a six-block area worth of $1 billion. Billion. Guess what? I don't think it's a good place for the Navy administration building. It's insecure, but they could put it on anywhere. Why didn't they take it right on the most incredible... The most valuable property in the world, almost, on our bay, blocking off the bay? They could put it on any of our military bases. Mr. Manchester cannot protect his $1 billion investment because he can't find tenants in a down economy. Guess what? He just met with the mayor, he met with Mr. DeMaio, and he has commitments to put... To save his... I say assets. A new city hall on that property. New city hall which should not be owned by the taxpayers. It would be owned by him, and he's leasing it back to us for hundreds of millions of dollars. That's the kind of decisions that are run in this city now. We're going to break that open. That cannot happen, to private... To do your public policy for a private individual. That's wrong, and we're going to change that, but that gets right back to the neighborhoods. That's why we don't have money for the popos. That's why we don't have money for the libraries. That's why we don't have money for our police officers and our fire stations.
What's your proposal to generate more income for the city, since the tourist dollar is dwindling due to a poor economy?
Well, you all know that income that the city has comes from a thriving economy. I mean, if the economy is moving forward, the city will have enough money. We have a $3 billion operation now. That's a lot of money. So, we got a lot of money coming in, but we got a lot of services. We're not paying enough. We're not spending enough on police. We're not spending enough on libraries. How do we change? And, I said, one way is to just change the priorities of who we're giving the money to, but more importantly, I think, is the overall economy. And, I mean, just quickly, number one, our port, I think, has the biggest potential for creating middle-class jobs in this region than any other place. When we lost a lot of the defense industry in the '90s, we lost what gave San Diego its prosperity. Some of you, you know, Claremont was built in the '50, '60, '70 based on our defense industry, General Dynamics. Used to employ 60,000 people. They went down to zero. Qualcomm now has 8,000. I mean, that's the difference between the biggest company then and now. But, those were middle-class jobs, where people can get livable wage, just buying their house for themselves, get their kids to college, you know, the American dream. And, we lost a lot of those jobs, which have never been replaced. I have a plan that we... We're the biggest city on the eastern west coast that is not a maritime center. Ships coming in and out, you know, tourists watching the ships, kids watching the ships. We have some, but we can double, triple, quadruple that volume and build thousands of jobs. I'm going to mandate that all public buildings, and I hope I can work with the school system on it, that we solar power our buildings within five years. Imagine the demand that creates in one industry but spreads throughout the economy for solar panels, photovoltaic cells, energy audits. We can do that. This is not... Does not wait for the feds, or the state government, or anybody else. We can do that right here. And, people say, "Wow, what's that going to cost? What's that going to cost?" There are companies now that are thriving, for example, in energy, that will upfront all the capital costs for my program and get their payment by the energy savings off the electric bill. So, we're going to pay for that out of that. The port, when the private sector comes in, they build that infrastructure. We can do this in San Diego.
Here's a question, I think, kind of germane this evening. Is it important to build a new stadium for the Chargers, and if so, why?
I love the Chargers. It's a real sacrifice to be here. I'd say we're playing it right now. And, you know, Major League City ought to have a Major League football team. No, I mean, we ought to have a team. That was a joke, guys. But, we got a billionaire owner of a team that makes hundreds of millions a year, and they want $1 billion from us. That's what they want. And, when asked why, you know what they say? Because other teams get the money. They don't say, "Oh, they can't do it without them." They can build it by themselves. They want our money because it increases their profit. And then, we don't... We can't even afford the tickets that we're supposedly... So, I say no public money, first thing. I will help them build it if they want to build it privately. I also will throw out some ideas. What if we owned, as citizens, a part of the team? Because soon as you build a stadium, by the way, it goes up $400 million to $500 million a guy, then they leave. They get rich, and they leave. Why don't we have a percentage of that? Why don't we have a percentage of the profits? Well, I'll talk to them. I'll talk to them about doing something. I want to get back more than we have to put in, because... And, but they don't feel they have to do it. They have a monopoly. I mean, I can't go out for a bid for a football team. Major League Baseball, Major League Football have monopolies based on some exemptions from an antitrust act. So, we cannot... They have... I used a strong word, extortion from us, the ticket guarantee, for example. So, but we're going to stop that, although I want to find a way to keep them if I can. I don't think they want to move. I don't think they can move. Everybody, they're going to LA, they're going to LA. The NFL, other owners won't let them because, you know, that's a big market, and why should one team get all that money? So, I think we have some leverage, and I'm going to use it, and I would like to keep them, but no public money.
Thank you. "San Diego has a large percentage of small businesses. You mentioned that Qualcomm is a big business, and it's only 8,000 people, and I know there are many, many businesses. I think over half the businesses in the city are small, under five people. I'm wondering, as mayor, what you can do to support small businesses and entrepreneurship?"
Well, it's very key. I mean, the system, you know, if you say 25 and under, I think it's 90% of our businesses are small businesses. And, all of the politicians would say, you know, they have to stimulate small businesses. And, most people talk about streamlining and regulations and all that, and we've got to do that. I mean, that goes without saying, actually. And, I stood online when I was on the city council or the school board with people who try to get permits, seeing what they have to go through, making sure that we didn't get rid of stupid regulations and we didn't duplicate things. But, we're going to have to do more. I mean, what I said about the port, by the way, stimulates the whole economy, stimulates small business. The alternative energy plant stimulates small business. We're going to have a much more vigorous office of small business in the mayor's office. There is one now, but it's greatly reduced in the ability to serve. There ought to be a place where people can get help. We ought to have... Figure out access to capital. You know, when I was on the city council in the '90s, we had a recession somewhat like this, except this one is deeper. I was made chairman of an ad hoc economic development committee. We wrote the first economic development plan in San Diego. Nobody had heard too much about high-tech. Now, we're the third biggest city in high-tech in the country. But, what we did, we set up a program to streamline permitting and, you know, the whole process for setting up a business here in San Diego. We made sure that there was an ability. We set up incubators, that is, through city facilities, to allow companies to start. And, most important, and which we still need back today, capital. That's the biggest problem in starting a small business, and the city can help, guaranteeing loans, working with the banks, or demanding that the banks help. You know, the banks have gotten billions of dollars of our tax money. They haven't helped very much in stopping foreclosures or helping small business. We need to force them to do that. So, I have some experience in doing that. And, lastly, you know, the city is a big business, as they say, $3 billion a year. We have hundreds of millions of dollars that we give out in contracts. Small businesses don't get even a fraction of that. The big parking company, or the big security company, or the, you know, the big towing company, they all get the contracts. What happened to our small business? We have leverage here. I'm gonna mandate that at least 15% of all these contracts go to small business, it's only a few percent today, and thereby stimulating through the public sector, which we have to go buy the contract to buy stuff, services, really put our money where our mouth is.
Thank you. Just a couple more questions and we'll be finished. Hope this wasn't too terrible. "What publications do you read on a monthly or periodic basis, and how do they inform your policy decisions?"
Wow. You know, that's the first question we got in a year and a half. Oh, Nancy. By the way, you gotta be careful about Amador here. Look at his wife. I read, literally, by the way, I read all the community papers. I mean, I was doing it in my congressional district, which did not cover Claremont, but since I started running, I do them all. You know, and that's where you get the flavor, the sense, you know, there's letters to the editor, there's advertising, I mean, all that is really important. And I'm a, what shall I say, I'm obsessive about it. I mean, my staff has to be giving every newspaper in my district. And I'm one of two city councilmen, by the way, in the history of San Diego that's been elected by both systems that we've had, citywide election and district election. I was elected by both. So when I was in the city, I mean, citywide, and I was in Claremont, not just, you know, say, in the southern part of our city, I read all the community papers. But, and I try to read the national news magazines, I understand Newsweek is gonna stop, it's print publication, but I like Newsweek. I read, what shall I say? I'm originally from New York, I've never gotten over reading The New Yorker, I read that every week. There are some other publications, political stuff. Now everything's online, of course. So, and I wanna say for Carl's camera here, I read San Diego Rosprout eight times a day. That's the publication of the, not the Republican Party, but, you know, but I know what their sense of me is by reading the San Diego Rosprout. So, you know, the blogs are all there, and obviously, I'm a newspaper freak. I wish we still had newspapers in America. I have not stopped my subscriptions to the Union, like UT they call it now, even though they hit me every day. By the way, I went 25 elections in San Diego, I never had UT endorsement. So I figured this is just another one that I'll leave out. Well, I'll tell you how they think of me. I once was on Mission Bay and I had a voting accident. This is a new one for your camera, by the way. Listen carefully. I had a voting accident, and to save myself, I was capsized, I had to walk on the, on the, on the bay to the beach, and I survived. The headline in the Union Tribune next day was, "Filner Admits He Can't Swim." That's how they treat you.
In closing-
That was a good closing.
In closing, let me ask you, please, tell our audience, you've been all kinds of elected officially, you've been all kinds of public servant, you've been a teacher, everything else. Why do you want to be San Diego's mayor?
You know, what I have learned, why I went into public service, why I ran, why I became a professor at San Diego State, why I ran for the school board and the city council, was to help people. I learned when I was very young, I happened to have the honor of meeting Dr. King when I was 13 years old. And I committed myself to nonviolent social change, and by 18, I was in jail for civil rights violations, although the Supreme Court overturned that. And what the Supreme Court said, I was a freedom rider, as I said, in the early 60s, and what the Supreme Court said was not only we were unjustly arrested, but that the whole legal structure of segregation was overturned. And I said, "Wow, here I am, 18 years old, and we changed American history." I mean, we didn't make it perfect, but we literally changed. These people don't have to face two water fountains in a public place that says, one says white and one says color. I mean, that's wrong. It's wrong for all of America. And we changed it, and I said, "Wow, America is really the most open society in the world if you get involved." That's why you're at this town council. You understand that if you're involved, you can make the changes. And I found that out very young, and I found it out when I was in office, I could help people. I'll just, if I could tell one story to show you what gives me incredible gratification and why I'm here. A lady came to see me when I was congressman, and she said, "I got 30 days to live." I said, "Thanks, you know, go see the mayor." No, I, and I said, "What do you mean?" She said, "Well, I needed," I forget the exact three organs, but they were big, a heart, liver, and lung transplant. And it turned out that those organs were available, but she had arranged the funding for it. And the hospital said, "Call up your private insurance company, they will pay for it." And she calls the private insurance company, she says, "No, this is a catastrophe or catastrophic. Medicare pays for that." So she calls up Medicare, and Medicare says, "No, you're privately insured, go to your insurance company." And she went back and forth, literally, for 60 days, and nobody could agree. Comes to see me with 30 days left. And I said, "Well, I don't have any authority over this, but I'm a congressman, they'll take my call." So I said, "You're not leaving here till we figure this out." So I get her online with Medicare and with insurance company. It took us about an hour, and we worked out and split, I think it was 60/40. She goes in within a week to get her operation. She was out, I mean, these operations, I don't know, incredible. 10 days, she was back home. She was 55 years old, she looked 75 when I first met her. I go back to her, I go over to her home, and she looks 55 again. I mean, and she's, you know, normal, as it were. And I'm thinking, "Wow, I saved this lady's life." And it's not because I had any power to do it, I got, I was, I get, I'm a hands-on person. If somebody has a problem, I go solve it. I've been accused, thank you, Carl, of, I don't know, temperament thing. No, I am passionate. I get passionate about my constituents, and if someone needs help, I do it. And we saved this lady's life, and I have, I could tell you thousands of stories like that, literally, because I've been in office so long, but not as dramatic as that. But that's why I'm in this, to help people. That'll be my closing statement also.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Filner, and very much appreciate your endorsement of the newspaper there. And thank you, everybody, for coming tonight, and I hope you learned something that will help you when you go to vote on next Tuesday, November 6. Most importantly, make sure that you are in the voting booth on November 6, and make your vote count. Thank you. Thanks, Ryan.
Hey, thank you, Janet. Let's give a round of applause for Janet Miller. Thank you. Real quickly, we've got public director's reports, Mike Snyder, Julie Jenkins. Oh, Julie left? Okay. And nobody else is here. So we're gonna move right on to the raffle, and like I said, what I wanted to do was have both the mayoral candidates sign a copy of the campaign on DVD, but we only have Congressman Filner here, so he's engrossed in the conversation right now, taking a picture. But I do wanna bring Congressman Filner back up so we can get him to sign a copy of the campaign.
But don't you want to redo the raffle? You can't trust him, though.
Five days. Is it time for a poll again? I'll sign.
Is this an endorsement?
Five parties.
Meeting's over, you can say.
Five parties.
So we're gonna move into the raffle. Actually, here, we wanna raffle this long.
I don't think you should watch this before the election. I think it's about a congressman goes astray.
All right. Last three numbers, is that what we do?
Yeah.
Four, four eight.
Wait, I gotta check.
If anybody else has any questions, you want to, Dr. Can you be here for this?
Yeah. Okay, we'll go. So, the next raffle prize is the Sandwich Emporium gift card, and this is, last three digits are 449.
That one.
Okay, good. All right. I'll give somebody else a chance. Uno, dos. Four, six, eight.
Ryan, how's it going?
It's wonderful.
Do you want it or four?